Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, October 5. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Cliqua.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Rashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chairman Iler.
Here.
All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to compete with our electronic communications. We do have several presentations and recognitions to make this morning, so we'll do so at this time. I'd like to ask Joanna Choak to join me at the podium this morning, and Penny Poste Ferguson, who's Deputy County Manager. Thank you for representing the employee group this morning.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation recognizing National Consumer Service Week. The International Customer Service Week. The International Customer Service Association started Customer Service Week in 1984. To make it official, on October 8, 1992, President George H. Bush gave his stamp of approval and signed a presidential proclamation that the first week of October every year to be proclaimed as National Customer Service Week. In a county such as ours, which provides a wide range of services, the most successful departments are those that develop a strong commitment to customer service. So on behalf of the Board, I am pleased to proclaim October 2 through 6, 2017, as Customer Service Week. And Joanna, I'll present this proclamation to you, and I think Penny has some comments to make also.
Thank you. Some quick comments on behalf of all the employees that are here for customer service. Today, we are joined by representatives from 19 Johnson County departments, including District Courts, Emergency Management, Human Resources, Human Services, Mental Health, DTI, Department of Technology and Innovation, Health and Environment, Airport, Appraiser's Office, Parks and Recreation, the Sheriff's Office, Johnson County Wastewater, Records and Tax Administration, Treasury and Financial Management, Emergency Medical Services, County Managers' Office, District Court, the Election Office, and Developmental Supports.
I'm going to ask you to repeat that. And as you...
Okay.
As you call each department, if there are representatives from that department present, would you stand?
Okay, I'm going to do it again. District Courts.
Representatives of District Court here. Very good. Thank you.
Emergency Management.
Okay.
Human Resources.
Back to the corner.
Human Services. Right here. Mental Health. Department of Technology and Innovation. Health and Environment. The Airport. Appraiser's Office. Parks and Recreation. I think they could not make it, if I remember. Yeah. Sheriff's Office. There's a lot of Sheriff's Office reps.
Very good. Thanks, guys.
Johnson County Wastewater. A whole section.
Yes, alright.
Records and Tax Administration.
That would be me.
TFM, Treasury and Financial Management. Back here. Emergency Medical Services. County Managers' Office. District Court. Elections Office. And Developmental Supports.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, earlier, there was a picture with all this group with the Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners also provide a great level of customer service and are expected to respond like you are on the front lines. Our county provides high-quality services, and as part of that, customer service is a big piece of that. And when we empower our employees to make a difference on the front lines, you guys deliver, and that is an important part of why we provide quality services. With courtesy and responsiveness that you all provide, it goes a long way towards customer satisfaction and raising awareness of what the county provides. It impacts Johnson County government's reputation and success. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, again, special thanks to those employees. We do provide a wide range of service to our customers, taxpayers of Johnson County. Many of those services are mandated by the state, and all the way from the Department of Motor Vehicles, Election Office, Treasurer's Office, and many, many other areas. But congratulations to each one of you for achieving this recognition, and it is well-deserved. And again, thank you very, very much. Next is Chad Van Anen. Chad's here this morning. Do you have some other folks that are going to be up here shortly? Do you want to bring them up now?
Yeah, sure. Dave, Aaron, Joe, Tyler. Come on.
I'll let Chad make introductions a little later, but we have a proclamation recognizing Disability Employment Awareness Month. You know, today, individuals with disabilities are more and more recognized throughout the business community as being dependable, capable employees. Johnson County Developmental Supports provides much leadership in this area. And we at the county are pleased to participate with our private sector employers. We are active in a program called Project Search, and we have individuals who work with various county departments, and we appreciate what they bring to the workplace and the fine work that they do. So, this year's Disability Employment Awareness Month, the theme is "Inclusion Drives Innovation." And working with those with disabilities in the workplace certainly proves that. So, pleased to provide or declare on behalf of the Board, October 2, 2017, as Disability Employment Services Month in Johnson County. And Chad, I know you have some comments to make.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'll be brief in my comments. I really want to highlight some of the folks that we have with us today. Our mission at Johnson County Developmental Supports is to provide choice-driven supports for people, to focus on their abilities, and advocate alongside them to live and work in that piece right there, and work in our community. I think for all of us, we know that work is something that we all identify ourselves with, and that's no different for people with disabilities. So, the work part of this is important. Right now, through JCDS, we have 95 people that are working in the community, and they're earning an average of $9.15 an hour, which is great work by our staff. As Chairman Iler mentioned, innovation is one of the drivers that makes competitive employment a reality for folks. We have a few programs that I just want to mention that we've been working on and starting through developmental supports, including programs such as our Emerging Artist Program, which is now at the Arts and Heritage Center, our Paper Crete Works Program, which is starting to make some park benches for Parks and Rec. Thank you, Commissioner Osterhaus, for some of those ideas. Appreciate that. As well as Project Search. And so, some of you that have been around the admin building here for a number of years have saw the inception of the Project Search Program as county government, as our beginning host site. But we've expanded that now to Embassy Suites, and I really want to take a moment here to highlight some of the folks that have been working in the program, and also Dave Hannings from Project Search, or from Embassy Suites. From Project Search, we have Tyler Wilson, and Aaron Habhager, and also Joe Duncan. So I will turn it over first to Dave. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Good morning. My name's Dave Hannings. I apologize for my voice, or lack thereof, a little under the weather. It was a gift from my son, so thanks, Austin. I appreciate this. Anyway, I'm here to represent Embassy Suites Hotel and Heart of America Group, Mike Wayland's company. Real short, real briefly, I'd just like to say how honored and how proud we are to be associated with Project Search, and what a positive relationship we've had. I talk to my staff quite a bit. I think we've gained more from it than Project Search did. It's just been a pure pleasure to work with them, and we look forward to continuing that relationship in the future. So, thank you so much. Thanks to Project Search. We're real proud of that relationship. Super proud of all the interns that have worked with us, and especially proud of Tyler and Aaron. They're two of our own. They're, I got to take them back to work when we get done. So, anyway, thank you so much. We're just so proud and so glad to be associated with it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Aaron Habhager, and I love Project Search. Project Search has done a lot for me, so I've got a job out of it, got paid. Money's good. Been here for about six months, six, seven months. It's just great. Just been wonderful. So, thank you.
Good comments. Thank you very much. I'm going to raise the microphone.
Thank you. Okay. Hello, my name is Tyler, and I used to be a member of Project Search, and now I'm an employee working at the Embassy Suites as a maintenance man. I have been working there for a good five months now, and I never would have gotten there if it wasn't for Joe and Tina looking after me, making sure I was focused on my task, and I was always being confident in myself. And Bernadette, too. I forget.
Well, Dave, let me say a special thank you to Embassy Suites and your work. Really, really appreciate it. I understand there are some other interns from Embassy Suite here today. Would you guys stand? Alright, very good. Why don't you come up, and you can be in the photo along with us, please. If you'll come this way? Is Jacob still here? Why don't you stand up? Okay, yeah. Jacob is one of our Project Search employees who worked in the County Managers' Office, and he now does a great job for the Sheriff's Office. And so, congratulations. You work full-time for the Sheriff? Is that right?
That's correct.
And you haven't been put in jail yet? Okay, that's good. Well, Jacob, why don't you come up here and join us, too? We'll get you in the photo.
Alright.
Second, right beside you.
Let's go.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. employees stepping up and making a commitment that is really important to individuals in our community and to our community as a whole. So, Dave, thanks again for the very good work that you do. Next, I'd like Jane Schwartz to join me at the podium. Jane, we have a special recognition this morning. The Treasury and Financial Management Benefits Award from the National Association of Government-Defined Contribution Administrators. This is a 2017 Leadership Recognition Award, and speaks to the fine work that you do in Treasury and Financial Management and directing and oversight of our, part of our retirement program. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, a year ago, I was up here during National Retirement Security Week, and introduced you to some video vignettes at Voya, our deferred compensation program. Our record keeper had taped of our county employees and their retirement goals and their path towards retirement. So this year, now I'm here, I'm accepting this award for that video vignette program or campaign that went through the NAGDA program. So they awarded us this leadership award for that video campaign. Voya videotaped and interviewed nine different employees, and then they put together nine one-minute video vignettes, which we've been releasing through the last year. You've seen, I think, six of them, so three more to come. One was released just this week. And then they also did a three-minute video, a little longer one, that we introduce and play during orientation for our new employees, to get them introduced and excited, as I am about saving for retirement. What was really exciting about this campaign was that Voya used our vignettes and our employees in their national campaign for the National Retirement Security Week. I was going to show you the three-minute video, however, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty. So hopefully, in two weeks, I'll be back for National Retirement Security Week, and I can show it to you then. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. And next, I'd like to ask Becky Salter to join me at the podium. And you have some folks with you, too. Very good. Becky is Director of our Human Resources Department, and they have received an award from their international organization for excellence. And so, we are pleased that Johnson County government was selected for this honor, and appreciate the efforts of all of the employees, and especially HR Department, to bring this fine recognition to your work area as well as Johnson County. So, I'll present this to you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to make some comments, please do.
I would. This is a really special award for me because it's given to our department in this county by my peers across the country. And they only award three of these every year, and they're based on the size of the organization. And I invited the members of my team, they could come today. The rest are out supporting organizations throughout the county government. Because while this is an honor to receive this award, my real joy comes from working with this group every single day. Their commitment to one another, to the departments and agencies they support, to this county and to the citizens. I have never experienced such devotion and commitment, and I really wanted to have them be part of this. So, help me thank them for their work.
We do very much appreciate your good work and your commitment to serving the citizens of Johnson County. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address a commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, welcome you to the podium. State your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Carroll, and my address is 15555 South Moonlight, Olathe. My property is connected to the proposed Lineage Logistics project, and I'm here to ask you to rescind your approval of this project. And I would like to speak to you about rights this morning. The rights we think, I think we, as citizens of this county, should be able to expect. I think we have the right to know what is in the air we breathe, and we should have the right to know what hazardous chemicals are in our neighborhood. And we should have the right to walk outside of an evening and see the moon and the stars without floodlights invading our property. I think we should have the right to hear the birds or the winds rustling, the leaves in the trees, without being forced to listen to the constant drown of reefer trucks. I think we should have the right to smell the fresh air without the constant lingering smell of diesel fumes. I think we should have the right to have our elected officials truly listen to our concerns. And most of all, I think we should have the right to expect Commissioner Brown of the 6th District to stand up for the citizens who elected him, instead of selling us down the drain for big business. Chairman Iler, I can't go without commenting on the quote you gave the news media on the following: "All of the estate statutes." That may be so, but you have turned every airport code into a laughable piece of gibberish. There may be other buildings taller than New Century. They are not near our homes. There may be businesses with anhydrous ammonia. They are not 1,000 feet from our homes. You have twisted every issue from the burn height, parking allowance, noise level, lighting, building height, to the size of the footprint required to build on. To put this dangerous unwanted project at why? It offers brutally cold, 22 below working conditions, along with hazardous chemicals for below poverty wages for this county. The thing that should be quoted on is the four leaks at the Edwardsville plant, and I quote, "Two of them considered serious." This is Lineage Logistics' wonderful safety record at work again. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is Dennis Watson, 670 South Mulberry, Gardner, Kansas, 66030. You have displayed many of the reasons this morning why this county is a county of excellence. I'm pleased to have been a resident of this county for the last 38 years. I and my family, in the past, have not been aware of any situation of grave danger in this past. But now, we have a serious threat that could be prevented by a conscientious county commission. I'm very concerned about the lives, the health, and safety of my family, my friends, and my neighbors. I'm very concerned about the threat of pollution to the environment of this county, to the property values of the adjoining neighbors of the proposed lineage project. You have the evidence. You know the facts. You know it's not a good fit. You know it's wrong. I appeal to you, as a concerned citizen of this good county, for you to rethink, reconsider, and reverse the decision to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vince Workoich, 15445 South Moonlight Road. I'm retired from the Sheriff's Office for almost 13 years now, and I won't discuss all the negative things that have been said about this plan at New Century Airport, but I would like to talk a little bit about contingency plans. I know the Sheriff's Office can't discuss them because of homeland security reasons. But let me just start by asking, how many people in this room have been held at gunpoint more than a couple times? I have. How many people have had a machine gun emptied at them during a kidnapping situation? I have. How many people have been the entry team on over 350 search warrants? I have. Every one of those situations, I had a contingency plan based on the training and experience that I had. And I can tell you right now, the contingency plans are there, but they hardly ever work for a variety of reasons. And the main reason is there's so many variables that occur as situations rapidly evolve that you can't cover in a contingency plan. The contingency plans are basically there, they're created to keep you from being exposed in a lawsuit. Because if you don't have a contingency plan, then you're ill-prepared, and that's what's going to beat you up in court when you go to those lawsuits. I've also been sued three times. But because of the plans that we developed as part of the Sheriff's Office, I prevailed in each one of those lawsuits. So, when you hear people talk about contingency plans, and they're there in place, and if something bad happens, it's going to be handled, that's just not the way it is in real life, folks. Thank you. I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you.
Joanna Walker, 25088 West 150th Terrace. I just want to, once again, ask you all to please rescind... I just want to, once again, ask you all to please rescind your vote on behalf of the community. We had hoped at this point you would have already done that, but at this point, you can rescind your vote in regards to the IRB. So, if four or more of you would please stand up for the community, we would appreciate it. I have been given permission to state that I have personally spoken to Mayor Copeland, Marge Voight, and Jim Randall. They have all said that they have voiced their concerns to all of you in regards to this building. I have been asked by two Gardner City Council members to read their letters today. However, I only have room for one. This is from Steve Schut, Council President, City of Gardner. Honorable Commissioners, I am writing to you to express my profound concerns with the county government's handling of the Lineage Logistics cold storage at New Century Air Center. As President of the Gardner City Council and Leader of the Voting Block of the Governing Body, I am charged with the responsibility of working with all the members of our council to ensure a suitability, quality of life for our citizens while balancing that priority with economic development that diversifies our tax base. In this vein, I must take our citizens' concerns into consideration when evaluating new business development within our city limits. Part of that is also ensuring that appropriate communications have taken place between our intergovernmental partners, primarily USD 231, Johnson County Fire District 1, and Johnson County Water District 7, so that everyone is crystal clear of our intentions as a governing body and have had an opportunity to give us their feedback. There are two major issues that I, as a member of the governing body, have with the handling of this project in particular. First, the members of the city council were informed of this project not by the county, but by the residents living in close proximity to the industrial development, and only after the votes to approve the financing and plans for the project had already taken place. There was no opportunity given for the City of Gardner nor its representatives to weigh in on this project. In my discussions with members of county staff, they have even acknowledged to me that more effective communications may have served to alleviate concerns about the project in the first place. Second, and even more important, is the sheer number of deviances from county development codes granted to the developer to make this project work at New Century. From setbacks to building height restrictions to runway proximity, Lineage's facility has been granted several exceptions to code that in the past have been very difficult for even the City of Gardner to obtain for projects such as the New Hampton Inn and Suites development. In addition, the fact that the deviances were granted under a development plan and not via conditional use permit, which could have been denied as causing a nuisance to surrounding homeowners, has left many of my constituents feeling that none of this has been done in transparent manner. In light of these concerns, and on behalf of my constituents, who have expressed their frustration at the lack of response they are getting at BOCC meetings, I implore the County Commission to consider rescinding their approvals for this project pending a full, open discovery process, taking into consideration all factors pertaining to the development as well as the communities surrounding the proposed facility. Steve Schut, Council President, City of Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Good morning. My name is Joyce Carlton. I live at 26419 West 144th Court in Olathe, part of the Prairie Highlands Development, well within the one and a half mile evacuation zone. I have been honored to read a letter from Christina Harrison. She's a Gardner resident at 740 Valerie Lane, and she's also a Gardner City Council member. To Johnson County Board of County Commissioners, as a Gardner City Council member, I have received numerous complaints and a significant amount of material to review in regards to the construction of Lineage Logistics Freezer Warehouse at New Century. I am not sending this to debate the hazards of anhydrous ammonia or how it compares to hazardous material in various businesses and on trucks or rails. I have learned far more about this topic than I ever expected, and I understand that there are debatable items. I am alarmed, however, by the process. The first that I had heard about the storage/usage of hazardous material was at a council meeting several months ago, when many members of our community came to express their concerns. A couple of days later, I had a meeting with a member of the Southwest Johnson County Planning Commission who happened to be in attendance at this particular council meeting. He stated that while he approved this project, he was not aware until attending the council meeting that there was hazardous material involved. That is a problem. Being an elected official that has represented residents of the City of Gardner for almost eight years, I understand notification, public meetings, and the frustration of the general lack of feedback we receive on issues most of the time. This leaves us to make decisions that, as an elected official, we believe are in the best interest for our communities. This being said, I assure you that when there is an outpouring of support or opposition to a situation, I believe it's my duty as an elected official to listen, even if it is out of the normal process or timelines. This, to me, is one of those situations. Many people feel duped. They feel that there was an intentional lack of communication and oversight that led to approving this project. They feel that this project and the track record of this company put their families and property in danger. I'm asking that each of you please take the time to reconsider this project and to take into account the concerns and fears being expressed by over 1,000 of your constituents, those constituents that will be the most impacted if something does go wrong. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Christina Harrison. Again, she's a Gardner resident and a Gardner City Council member. I also concur with this and ask you that you please rescind your vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Kathy Fritz. I live at 26466 West 144th Terrace, Olathe, Kansas. It is in the Prairie Highland Development. Providing a form for the various public proclamations and so on is one of the good things that happens here. I was pretty moved, I think most of us were, particularly by the Disability Employment Group that was here. Those two young men who spoke, you just wanted to take them home and feed them. And it was just, these are the wonderful things that happen here. It's one of the good things. One of the not-so-good things is passing the Lineage Logistics Plan. You passed it back in July, you had a certain amount of information, but this is now October, and there's been a lot more information that's been provided, uncovered and provided. And we ask that you consider that and move on that. There's no shame in having passed that plan back in July based on what you all knew, and no feedback, because we didn't know anything either. We knew less than you did. But we all know a lot more now, and there's no shame in rescinding your votes. In fact, there's real shame if you don't, based on this new information. So, I ask you to rescind your approval for this plan. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is John Resman. I live at 434 North Preciman Drive, Olathe. I'm retired captain from the Johnson County Sheriff's Office, and I currently serve as a State Representative for the 121st District, which also encompasses the New Century Airport, so you probably know what I'm here to talk about. During the past two months, I have received many emails and phone calls out of frustration for the lack of response from county officials to the planned building site of Lineage Logistics, and my only recourse was to file a lawsuit. Area residents have voiced their concerns to me, and rightly so, about the chemical and hydro ammonia, the company's safety records, environmental issues, and the height of the building. The more I learned about the approval process, the more I became concerned. The number of variances given by the county in order to get this building built tells me something just isn't right. And what's even more dangerous is that a precedent has been set now. What will the next company want or demand to build at this airport or anywhere in the county? Last night, a local television station ran a story that according to records of the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, the Lineage Logistics Edwardsville facility had several violations in the last two years, and some were more serious, which reinforces the concerns of area residents. With the location of the building, county employees across the street at the Sheriff's Office Operations Building are also in great danger. Having spent the last 13 years of my career with the Sheriff's Office, I can tell you that building is not secure and will offer little or no protection should something happen at that plant. I have talked to several state representatives, and they are also very concerned about this process. What's happened here with Lineage and what's happened in Lewis County with Tyson have caused some area representatives to review the approval process at state level. Over the past weekend, I've heard that the Lieutenant Governor has been made aware of what's happening here in Johnson County. It's really sad that the Lieutenant Governor has to be advised of what's happening here in Johnson County over one building. As Representative, I understand that we need to bring business to our state and to Johnson County, and I've voted many times to do so. But in this case, with the amount of public opposition and the number of concerned elected officials, it's time to rethink this issue. Therefore, I stand with the concerned citizens of the District of 121 and ask that you rescind your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Julie Lynn. I'm State Senator for District 9. I live at 18837 West 115th Street in Olathe, and we've lived there for 30-plus years. I'm going to take a little different tact, because I'm sure you have copies of my testimony, that I, my letter. Have you seen my letter? You have not seen my letter?
Not at this point in time, no. Be glad to provide copies, however.
That's disappointing. You knew we were coming today. I wrote some different comments, just to capsize what I had written in this letter, but now it looks like I need to read the letter, so that people in the audience can Over the past several weeks, I've received many communications from concerned constituents, including homeowners, business, and landowners, and an organized citizens group, Citizens for Responsible Government, opposing the Lineage Logistics facility. The organized group has been very helpful in providing information about safety concerns as well as other issues involving the location of the project and the processes employed. I understand the importance of economic development. I'm the Chair of the Senate Commerce Committee. I have voted numerous times over the years, probably too many to count, on the economic development incentives that we have in the state of Kansas, as well as processes involved in economic development. So, obviously, I'm a friend. I also believe existing communities, such as Gardner, Olathe, Johnson County, should be first given consideration of all decisions affecting their investments, such as homes, businesses, land. Projects should align with the existing community to enhance the very component of everyday life and reflect the values of that community. Development decisions made by our local officials should meet not only the needs of the community, but also their collective desires. This includes a focus on the elements outlined in the Kansas statutes, to promote public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare, and protect the land, air, water, natural resources, and environment, and encourage their use in a desirable manner to preserve and protect property values under the jurisdiction of the county. In the case of Lineage Logistics, I strongly suggest that the committee reflect and consider this language in light of the community acrimony. The plethora of information on the dangerous hydro... I can't pronounce the word. Vi ammonia. Should be a wake-up call to the commission, especially in light of the close proximity to neighborhoods, families, children, the Joko Detention Facility, businesses, adjoining properties. Residents are extremely concerned about the ability to evacuate not only the facility, the Johnson County facility, but also their homes, in case there is a chemical leak or a toxic explosion, which many of you, I hopefully, have looked at the data. I must mention the dismay the constituents have expressed, believing the project was imposed without following county processes, procedures, if there are any in place, of which I'm now doubting after a conversation with one of the commissioners. In fact, deliberately deviating from zoning ordinances and statutes in order to push this project forward. They state they were not informed on the project. These are the citizens, they were not informed. Denied due process, and their collective voices ignored. These are, in my opinion, very serious allegations. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that you rescind your vote, and the vote be held at a regular, public meeting of the commission, so the citizens will know who is really representing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I must respond, the county has followed all statutory requirements in public notification and public meetings, and Senator, if you disagree with that, I'd be glad to sit down and visit with you and show you the record and the documents supporting that record. Thank you. Yes?
My name is Mike Duncan. I live at 15025 South Roxburg Street in Olathe, Kansas, and I echo what they've heard. I moved here recently. I've lived here before. My career took me away. I recently retired and moved back to this area by choice, because I think Kansas, Johnson County, and the City of Olathe provide excellence. And what we saw here earlier, and I know that Johnson County Park and Recreation District just got a national award last week, excellence prevails. But this process, while you may have fulfilled your obligations under the law, you did not do it in an open and transparent manner for us constituents. So, I'm very disappointed in the body and how they've been callous, refusing to answer our questions. And when I was here before, you handed out Lineage Logistics information. If that's the extent of your due diligence, I'm led to believe you didn't do proper due diligence. So, again, I'm echoing what they say, and Mike, I cannot believe how you failed to represent your constituents, and you want to be a 6th District Councilman. I think it's time for you to start representing us, and I ask the rest of the council to think of this as well.
Thank you. Someone else? All right, there being no one else to be heard, that concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. There are no notes for the record this morning, so we will turn to the... There are no notes for the record this morning, so we will turn to the proposed consent agenda.
Item number one, consider reappointing Paula Hurt as the chairman's representative to the Commission on Aging through September 1, 2020.
Any questions? Is there anyone—well, this is the only action item, so it will be considered separately. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, it's back for the commission. Mr. Osterhaus.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number two.
Consider approving the September 14, 2017 business session minutes.
Do I hear a motion?
I move—
Motion's made and seconded to approve. Mr. Brown was absent. Any corrections or additions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Abstain.
And Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number three, resolution number 080-17. Consider authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2017A of Johnson County, Kansas, for the purpose of providing funds to finance certain wastewater improvements and station alerting system in the aggregate principal amount to be determined, but now estimated to be $16,850,000, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of an interest on said bonds as they become due, and making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Robin.
Good morning. Robin Simms with the Budget and Financial Planning Department. Yesterday, we had our bond sale at approximately 1:00. For this first item, for the GO items, the final par amount that we received was $15,780,000. There were nine bidders. The low bid was Morgan Stanley and Company, and the true interest cost was 2.7%. Now, within that bond issue, we have wastewater projects and also the station alerting system. And we reaffirmed AAA by Standard and Poor's, Moody's, and Fitch on this particular issue.
Okay. Questions? Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? Do I hear a motion to award as presented? Excuse me. Mr. Clickum.
I move to approve and adopt resolution 080-17, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2017A of Johnson County, Kansas, for the purpose of providing funds to finance certain wastewater improvements and the station alerting system project, all in the aggregate principal amount of $15,780,000, making certain covenants and agreements to provide the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution number 080-17 in regards to the bond issuance. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, will the bond, or will our financial advisor be visiting with us about the current state of the markets because we're going to have some other issues coming forward and give us some sense of what the environment will look like at some point this morning?
Well, I would suggest that we can do that at the PBC meeting. We're going to have to recess at 10:30 and move to the PBC meeting so that action can be taken.
I'm good with that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number four, resolution number 081-17. Consider authorizing the designing, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a library to be located at Lenexa City Center, approving the issuance by the Public Building Commission of its lease purchase revenue bonds, Series 2017A, in the aggregate principal amount to be determined, but now estimated to be $15,050,000, for the purpose of paying for all or a portion of the cost of such improvements, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease with the Public Building Commission in connection therewith, and a sublease with the Board of Directors of the Johnson County Library in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain other documents and taking of certain other actions in connection therewith.
Robin.
Yes, Robin Simms with the Budget Department. This issue, again, we sold yesterday. The final par amount was $15,060,000. We had four bidders. The low bid was Robert W. Baird and Company with a true interest cost of 2.84%. And again, this is for the City Center Library project. We were reaffirmed AAA by Standard and Poor's and Moody's on this project, or on this issue.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Osterhaus.
I didn't have a question. I was ready to make a motion when you were ready, Chairman.
Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? All right, Mr. Osterhaus.
Let's see. I move to approve and adopt resolution 004-17—
Sorry. That's—
Oh, was that the wrong one? Oh, sorry.
I'm not the only one.
I move to approve and adopt resolution 081-17, authorizing the constructing, expanding, reconstructing, furnishing, and equipping of improvements to the Lenexa City Center Library, approving the issuance by the PBC of its lease purchase revenue bonds, Series 2017A, in the aggregate principal amount of $15,060,000, for the purpose of paying for all or a portion of the cost of such improvements, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease with the PBC in connection therewith, and a sublease with the Board of Directors of the Johnson County Library in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain other documents and the taking of certain other actions in connection therewith.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve a resolution number 081-17 in regards to the issuance of the bonds. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, resolution number 082-17. Consider authorizing the renovation, construction, equipping, and furnishing of improvements to the Criminal Justice Complex Adult Detention Center and the Olathe Adult Detention Center, approving the issuance by the Public Building Commission of Johnson County, Kansas, of its lease purchase revenue improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2017B, in the aggregate principal amount to be determined, but now estimated to be $25,705,000, for the purpose of funding such new projects and refunding certain outstanding bonds, and authorizing and approving the execution of certain documents and taking of certain actions in connection therewith.
Robin Simms with the Budget Department. For the Series 2017B, our final par amount was $23,125,000. We received six bidders. The low bid was U.S. Bancor Investments, and the true interest cost was 2.4%. This item included refunding, a refunding and approximately $2 million for the MARP project. For the refunding, we had originally estimated approximately $970,000 in savings. We actually, the present value is $1,365,000 in savings. And then we had 5.7% of present value for that as well, for the savings. Now, with this project, or with this series, because of the two components, we did receive a reaffirm our AAA with Moody's. However, with S&amp;P, we received a double A+. Part of that reason is due to S&amp;P's change in methodology with this tax lid that was approved by the state about a year ago. For that, for PBC bonds, not exempt from the tax lid, the rating approach is to apply a criteria for non-advalorem bonds and notch down one off the GO rating. So due to the tax lid legislation eliminating the ability to levy unlimited property taxes, that's why we received that lower rating. Now, I assume there will be questions. I don't know if you'd want to take those now, or we'd want to wait till after the PBC meeting?
Let's wait till we move to the PBC.
And then we can talk about that in more detail with Dave.
I do have one question, Robin. These are all refunding bonds?
$23 million, yes, is the refunding, and then approximately $2 million is the new money, is the new PBC money.
All right. And obviously, the portion that's being refunded was issued years before the tax—
Yes. It was prior to the January, or the 2016 tax lid date, and these were issued in 2011.
All right. And would you restate, or state once again, the amount of savings brought about by the refunding action?
Yes, $1,365,000 present value savings.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Brown?
Ready to make a motion when you're ready, Chairman.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve and adopt resolution 082-17, authorizing the renovation, construction, equipping, and furnishing of improvements to the Criminal Justice Complex Adult Detention Center and the Olathe Adult Detention Center, approving the issuance of the PBC of its lease purchase revenue improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2017B, in the aggregate principal amount of $23,125,000, for the purpose of paying for all or a portion of the cost of such improvements and to refund certain outstanding bonds of the PBC, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease with the PBC in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain other documents and the taking of certain other actions in connection therewith.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution number 082-17 in regards to the bond issues, as mentioned. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. At this time, we will recess our regular meeting and move to the Public Building Commission meeting. So we are in recess. Don't go anywhere. And we'll be right back for the PBC meeting.[1313.47]
I blew it off, I blew it off last year, man. I agree. I think that. I'm sorry. Why don't I do this a little bit every month?
Sure.
I have streamlined it. I have streamlined a little bit this year, but I'm still, it's just, I have to put information together. Give it to my calendar. I said I should probably just give them.
As you go.
Yeah. It costs money. It costs a lot of money, so. I do it myself. Of course, I've only been doing this for now for, for something, since '79, so what the heck.
We are reconvened from.
We are reconvened from recess, and we'll turn to management reports.
Thank you, Chairman. In your packet, you have the serial report for the non-residential building permit for August 2017. And if you look at month-to-month comparisons, we are down. However, if you look year-to-date, we have increased to 94 year-to-date compared to 15% higher last year than 80, this time last year, 82 permits, construction value of $526 million, 18% higher than year-to-date last year of $444 million. One thing to point out on the August portion is that there's four cities that have activity reported, and Spring Hill was the largest at $7.4 million out of the $11.6 million construction value over $250,000. And then you have in your packet, Major Projects Update. You've seen that before where we highlight the library, courthouse, medical examiner, parks, and wastewater. An addition that we added this month is a one-pager from the Parks Department, both Commissioner Click and I thought as liaisons to the Park Board that would be helpful, that you see a new report that they've done for their board, but it's a one-pager, one-page summary that lists all their projects, percentage completion, and estimated completion date, and also noted those projects are complete. So hopefully, you find that of, as some value as well. Last item is the city of Mission, Mission Trails Project. They approved an ordinance on September 20 regarding that project. You may recall, that's downtown Mission with apartments near Johnson Drive and Lamar, and you've seen activity on this before. This is the amended project plan and development agreement. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Postock Ferguson, on the Mission Trails Project, it wasn't clear in this documentation, but is this a TIF?
Yes. It is a $40 million project, and of that, $9.2 million is generated through TIF, and the other is through private debt and equity.
Okay. And we still haven't seen any cost-benefit information on this yet. We won't until projects are proposed. I just was not clear in terms of what this was supposed to be.
In the past correspondence that we forwarded, there was a cost analysis back in May. I'm not sure how detailed it was, and we can provide that copy again and see if that answers your question.
But this, how does this impact, is there?
Oh, that, that we didn't.
Okay.
Have.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Moving to commission comments, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, just to, first, would like to congratulate Johnson County Parks and Recs District on their national award. That was quite impressive, and for those that aren't aware of it, it is available on the county's website detailing what they did and what they accomplished, and it, you would be impressed. The competition gradient was steep. Additionally, I would like to congratulate Gerald Hay on an award for our, one of our publications, and I can't remember which one, but he received an award. He was not in Chicago to actually receive it, but he's quite proud of it, and I'm quite proud of him, and I'd like to congratulate him.
I believe it was best of times.
I believe you're right. I believe it was best of times, and I would like to congratulate him. I don't believe he's in the room, but I would like him to know we're very proud of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Osterhaus.
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Allen.
No comments.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Clickum.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to announce that tonight, the Johnson County Museum will be celebrating its 50th anniversary, and it will be celebrated at the Arts and Heritage Facility. So look forward to seeing all of you that can be there.
Very good. Mr. Schaefer.
Nothing to add, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Were you going to mention the mental health chili supper tonight?
No, but that's fine.
Well, I, I should have said something, but.
For those, for those who don't have the scheduling problems, that, that occurs what time?
I think it starts at 4 this evening. It's also tomorrow, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. It's on the calendar through tomorrow.
Typically, it is. I'll see if I can find the details, but generally, it goes the two days. You're right.
But it is open to the public, is it not?
Yes.
Yes. We should announce it in.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
We do have a study session with Public Art Commission scheduled for 1:00 p.m. today in Rooms 202, 204. As always, members of the media and public are invited and welcome to attend. Would just make one brief comment about the horrific events, event that occurred in Las Vegas this week, and once again, first responders stepped in harm's way to help citizens, as well as citizens helping citizens. It's an amazing confirmation of how this country reacts when something of this nature occurs. It's unimaginable that someone would do something like this, but our thoughts and prayers are with those who have lost friends and families, and for those who are recovering. God bless you all. That concludes our printed agenda, and so we are adjourned. We will reconvene for agenda review.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.